You want a trophy, Charles, right here? You want a trophy? Those guys are gonna take that trophy. No, I told him he didn't have it in the address.
And no, I don't want the trophy.
I gotta send a file for you.
Unless we're here, so. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt Nate's agenda.
Second.
Was there any discussion? Hearing none, to motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations, Jack.
Thank you, Mayor Voss. Mayor Voss and myself participated in the virtual meeting with the Minnesota Department of Transportation on Monday, August the 30th, 2021, to review a report by Stone Brook, a consultant for Mendott to study crash issues at the TH65 Viking Boulevard-RCI intersection. This study was prompted by the city regarding concerns that have been presented to Mendott since the opening of this intersection in July 2019 to the current date. The study is presented in attachment one in your package. Pages 36 through 39 contain a summary of the findings and the consultant's recommendations. The recommendations of the study were discussed at the September 7th, 2021 city council work meeting, with council requesting staff to invite Jennifer Wilchin, Mendott Metro District North Area Coordinator, to review the report with council. Jennifer is here with us along with two representatives from Stone Brook to make the presentation. Jennifer?
Hi, thank you, Jack. Thanks, everyone, for having us. So my name is Jennifer Wilchin. I-
City Jennifer, we're gonna have to ask you to-
Oh, good.
Because we need a microphone, you're gonna have to sit, sorry.
Okay.
Or if you'd like, you can go to the podium as well, so.
Oh, okay, great. So my name is Jennifer Wilchin. I'm North Area Coordinator for Mendott Metro District. And as you had mentioned earlier, we have been engaged in a study for the Viking Boulevard and 65 intersections since July of 2020. We've been working on the study. And so we're here to present these recommendations to all of you. I'm also here with Tim Arvidson and Kate Minor of Stone Brook Engineering, who we hired to do the report for us to analyze crashes at the intersection, review the geometry, and then, as you mentioned, make recommendations to Mendott. So I won't go into too much detail in background and the crash analysis. Mostly just focus on the recommendations of the report and leave plenty of time for questions. But as you mentioned, June 13th, 2019, we did construction of the signalized R-cut. Prior to that, it was a signalized intersection with a very wide median. Some of the things that prompted us to look at a signalized R-cut were intersection delay and also some safety concerns at the intersection and really some of the delay associated with the Viking Boulevard intersection, portion of the intersection. Since then, there were 36 crashes in the 13 months after the construction of the signalized R-cut, with two resulting in fatal injuries, three B injuries, six C injuries, and 25 property damage. We had have, and then as a part of the analysis, take a look at some of those crashes at the intersection. Twelve of those were right angle crashes and five of those were from the leftmost right turn lane. After reviewing some of those crashes, we identified that there were some issues that we wanted to take a look at or a more detailed look at, at which point we hired Stone Brook to take a look at everything and make some recommendations. So I'll pass it off to Kate from here.
All right, thank you. So she said, my name's Kate Minor. I'm a traffic engineer for Stone Brook Engineering. And we really kind of dug in and looked at those past crashes and looked at the delays. And I'm just gonna kind of briefly walk you through the alternatives we looked at and then the recommendations that we came up with. There were some things prior to us being brought into this project that had been done out on the project. And so on January 2nd of 2020, Mendott recognized that maybe some changes need to happen out there because of the high crash problem that Jennifer just talked about. So they did some additional signing that restricted the right turn from the leftmost right turn lane. So as you're on Viking Boulevard, there's two right turn lanes. So they added that signage to try to clear up maybe who could make a right turn on red and who couldn't. Left turns, they also added left turn allowed on red signs at the U-turns. That was just to kind of clear that up. So that's like taking a right onto a one-way road. So they were allowing that right turn on red. And then they also added mastarm through only signs on northbound and southbound 65. So those were all hopefully to try out to clear up maybe some of the confusion at that intersection and try to address some of the safety issues that were going on out there at the time. So the before crashes, we have about six and a half months of crash data that we looked at, that Jennifer just walked you through. Six and a half months, we had seven right angle crashes. In the 12 months after the January 2nd signing changes, we had five right angle crashes. So you could see, we did make some improvements with that new signage on there and clearing that up a little bit. Did make a little bit of a difference, but still kind of showed us that we still had a problem out there. So in August, Mendott came back and installed the no right turn on red signs so from either lane. So it didn't matter what right turn lane you were in, you could not take a right turn on red. Once that went in, you can see in the 13 and a half months before, we had the 12 right angle crashes. In the five months after that is in this report, there were zero right angle crashes. Since we've started this report and we did the crash analysis, it's been another six months. That crash data has been available. The crash data that we're reporting in the report goes through 2020. At this time, we now have crash data available to us through June of 2021. So we added those additional, looked at the additional months on that and there have been still no right angle crashes out there. And if I remember right, I believe there was only been two crashes out there in that time. Both of them rear ends. One was on 65, one was on Viking Boulevard. And that's actually to be expected at a signalized intersections. When we add signals and any kind of control at an intersection, typically those rear end crashes go up. So we did look at a couple different alternatives and what we were trying to get at with the alternatives that we looked at were to try to address the city's concern with the delay that cars were having on Viking Boulevard as a through traffic. And we're also obviously trying to look at the safety issue. So we're trying to balance both of those issues going on. So one of the things we looked at doing was what happened if, you know, could we go back and just only have one right turn on red into a single U-turn lane rather than the dual U-turn lanes? It would simplify the intersection is what we're kind of hoping. There wasn't a lot of data that went into why those duels were installed in the first place that was available to us. So we thought we'd just take a step back and say, do we really need them at this time? Can we take a step back? So alternative one is just that. It is a single right turn lane that would go into a single, straight into a single U-turn lane for any traffic that would be going through on Viking or southbound or northbound on Trunk Highway 65. The other right turn lane would kind of be a free right turn lane, if you will, and that would access directly onto 65. So that was the first alternative that we looked at. We'll talk about the results of these alternatives and what those look like in a little bit here. Alternative two that we took a look at, so what came out of alternative one is that wasn't adequate. We didn't have enough, we didn't have enough basically storage and throughput through that U-turn. It was taking up too much time on 65, so we were backing up traffic on 65 with that scenario. So then we thought, well, what if we just have a right turn off of Viking Boulevard? And then we would expand it out into two U-turns. So we would have dual U-turns at that point. And so we looked at that alternative and that alternative is our second, alternative two. Alternative three was looking at having three approach lanes on Viking Boulevard from either direction as you come up to 65. One of them would be a free right scenario where you would have to go northbound or southbound on 65. The other two would turn directly into the two U-turn lanes. So there wouldn't be a lot of confusion on what lane people need to be in. Right now, out there sometimes we see a lot of people jockeying lanes because they're not sure what lane they need to be in. This scenario would clear some of that out. So we'll spend a little bit of time on this. So this is, these are graphs that kind of show you the travel time and what that delay looks like if you were a through vehicle on eastbound and/or westbound Viking Boulevard. So the blue scenario is signal. So you can see we have 2016 existing, what it was and what that delay looked like and how long it actually took a vehicle average delay to get and make that movement, either eastbound or westbound. And then you can see as we go up to the next group of bars, we have 2019 volumes eastbound. So there you can see, now we don't have the signal scenario in there, right? Because our signal doesn't exist in 2019. So we have our existing, if the right turn on red was allowed, as it was before the signage changes were made. We have our existing scenario is the green bar and that's after the signage changing was made, not allowing any right turn on reds. Alternative one, two, and three, as I just discussed. So I think the biggest thing to note on these tables are, the other thing I should point out quicker are the left table is the AM peak and the right table is the PM peak. So I think the things to note on there are, specifically in eastbound in 2019 in the AM peak, you can see that we added a little bit of delay from our, from our green bar basically to our red bar by not allowing that right turn on red. But we did not add a significant amount of delay for the eastbound. We added a little bit more, 20 seconds more in the westbound scenario. All the alternatives, probably they operate about the same in that, in this 2019 scenario. And then if you jump over to the PM side, you can see we're kind of looking at the same thing for eastbound. Everything's pretty similar. You know, if we allow right turn on red, it is a little bit lower. For the eastbound, for the westbound, it is significantly lower. So our trade-offs at that point kind of become a little bit of, now we're looking at delay versus safety for 2019. The other thing to note on that is the green bars on there were done with signal timings that Mendott had in at the time that we did the analysis. Since then, Mendott has made changes and I think they're continually kind of tweaking those timings out there. I do think that if we went back and looked at that now, it was, it probably operates a little bit better than it showing up there. But we don't have that data necessarily. I just know that they're constantly kind of tweaking and making changes and reacting to a real world scenario out there where this is all modeling scenario. So they can get better timings in the field when they know exactly what they're dealing with. So we move on to 2040. And if you look at the AM charts again, in the 2040 eastbound movement, this is where we start to see some significant changes out here. So now you can see that for existing, our green bar eastbound in the AM is quite a significant delay. And we still have quite a significant delay even when we're in that red scenario with the existing right turn on reds. So we started looking at mitigating that with the alternatives one, two, and three, like I talked about. And you can see we made some definite improvements with each of those scenarios. And before we get too excited about that, we're gonna move on and talk about westbound. And you can see in the westbound, now we also introduced a signal scenario back in here also. So you can see what would happen in 2040 if a signal would have been kept in there. So 2040 westbound in the AM, basically we would have kind of had a failure situation, either with a signal or with alternative one. And if you remember, that alternative one was a single lane right turn into a single U-turn lane. Everything else, again, kind of operates about the same. Unless we're allowing those right turn on reds again. So if you jump over to the PM peak in the 2040, again, we're seeing some significant delay with a signal in there. We're seeing significant delay with that alternative one. And everything else, again, is operating about the same for the eastbound and for the westbound. So are there any questions on that? Does that make sense to everybody?
I think we're good right now.
Okay. I just, that's a lot of information. So I just wanted to make sure you were following me on that one before we moved on. So basically, in summary, the dual right turn lanes are needed out there. The right angle crash pattern resolved itself with the restriction of the right turn on red. We've seen that 11 months even past that signing change. We've still seen that improvement out there with the no right angle crashes, which is awesome. So the extra delay concerns with that no right turn on red are kind of, have been mitigated, like I mentioned, with new detection and new timings out there. We did look at using blankout signs. That was one of the things that we talked about as a PMT. And a blankout sign is a sign that would come on and only allow no right turn on reds at a certain time of day. So when the blankout sign was on, you couldn't take that right turn on red. The problem with doing that is typically the way blankout signs work like that is it would not be operational during the times that they would be needed. So during those peak times and that's, it didn't really solve any of our problems out there by utilizing those. So we did look at them, but they're not part of our recommendation. We did recognize out there when we were doing site physics that, you know, their poor sight lines do exist out there. We looked at a couple different things to try to mitigate that, those poor sight lines. And we looked at constructing offset right turn lanes. So on 65, that right turn lane would be pulled out wider a little bit so that would not impede the view of somebody taking that right turn off of Viking Boulevard. We looked at removing crosswalk markings and relocating stop bars to try to get that traffic up a little bit so they could have a clearer sight line. And we looked at relocating the obstructions. And the instructions up there include guardrails, signal cabinets, signing. There's some signing out there. So we did look at all those things and none of them are part of our recommendation. And the offset right turn lanes are not part of our recommendation because there isn't any safety data, even on a national level, that show that offset right turn lanes have a safety effect. So we're hesitant to say that that's going to solve our problem out there when there isn't any data out there that supports something like that. Removing the crosswalk markings just was not an option. Mendott has made pedestrians and, you know, high priority at intersections. And so removing and relocating that was not an option. And then relocating the obstructions, again, I think maybe just the cost of it compared to some of the other alternatives didn't necessarily solve our problem that I think is probably as much caused by dual rights, both allowing a right turn on red. Most other states, as we did research, that have dual rights at a signalized R-cut situation do recommend no right turn on reds. So that's not out of the norm and is actually standard practice for, I believe, almost every state that we looked at that has that scenario. The other thing that we looked at was signal head placements. So we, you'll see in our recommendations, we did make some recommendations that we think will help with where the signal heads are placed. One of the biggest things that we noticed out there is the signal, if I can explain this. If you're saying westbound on Viking Drive and you're sitting there waiting to make a left turn, your signal heads are right in front of you. It's a little mastarm that's right there in the median. But as you're sitting there, you can also see the signal head that's across the interstate that is actually for northbound left turn vehicles. And so there is a scenario where the right turn signal will be red, but that left turn signal that those vehicles can see is green. And when you're at a regular standard intersection, yeah, thank you. You can, so you can see the dual mastarm right there in front is the signal and you can see that signal head across. At a standard intersection, that is where you're used to looking for your signal head is across the intersection. There were specifically, if I remember right, two crashes. Does that sound right? Do you guys remember? I think at least two crashes that stated right in the police report that they said, I thought my light was green. I thought I saw it turn green. We think this is probably what was happening. So we have made some recommendations to fix this issue to hopefully mitigate people seeing that green light and thinking, there isn't going. So the other thing that we did notice is we do have some unfamiliar drivers. This is the first signalized R-cut in the area. If I remember right, on the crash reports, we had a lot of younger drivers that were a little bit over representative in crashes at this area. And again, that's just inexperienced drivers kind of in that unfamiliar intersection that we haven't seen in Minnesota before. So we came up with some short-term recommendations. Some of them, most of them here I've talked about. But we did, we are recommending that the northbound and southbound left turn signal heads are modified. So there's a couple different ways that that can happen. We can put some louvered heads on and we can do programmable heads or some things that can be done for that. So those are modified so you can't see those from that right turn lane. We also looked at the northbound and southbound left turn heads, so that's off of 65, that they should be centered over the lane of approach rather than the receiving lane and recommending some light extensions to add some lights onto those, some illumination onto those receiving lanes. The U-turn intersection signals we're recommending to be lowered. They were built, I believe, originally with the project about 20 inches, 12 inches higher because there was a project that was meant to come through on 65 Millen Overly. It was gonna add some, yeah, yeah. And that project's not going to happen anymore. So if you notice out there, you can actually see the bases sit really high. Those signal heads sit really high. They're not causing problems up there necessarily. We're not seeing the crash problems at those U-turn intersections. But we are recommending that if they're gonna get out there and make changes, that that would be something that they could change just to even maybe clean up that intersection a little bit. Another recommendation we're making out there is to remove signs that are not required. There is a lot of signing at that intersection. I think at one point when we were out there, I think I counted there was like 15 signs a driver has that's directed at them at one given point as they're sitting in those turn lanes. So some of those obviously are required signs and they need to be there. But we also want to try to clean this intersection up and make it a little bit more streamlined so it's not so confusing. There are some signs out there that are redundant signs. Specifically, one-way signs out there. I think there's a plethora of those out there. So that's one thing that comes to mind. I believe there's an adopt a highway sign that I feel can be moved out of the functional area of the intersection that would just be one less sign that people have to contend with. So we do make some recommendations on removing and cleaning up the signing out there a little bit. The do not enter signs, like, yeah, I guess I just talked about all those and the redundant one-way signs. We did take a look at some of the long-term recommendations. These are gonna be, you know, your higher cost recommendations. Basically, what we are recommending is alternative three out of the alternatives that we looked at. And that would be you would enter an acceleration lane and merge into 65 traffic. So as I said, there's three approach lanes onto 65. One of them is that, that free right, if you will, that will not have to stop for the signal. And it will have a thousand-foot turn lane so they can merge in with traffic on 65 so they're not pulling into traffic at a standstill. That acceleration lane would be separated by some sort of median or barrier so people couldn't try to cheat the signal a little bit and think that they're gonna jump over those U-turn lanes. The biggest benefit that we see in this is for the southbound AM peak. And that is because there's such a large right turn, eastbound right turn to southbound movement and a large southbound movement on 65 that if we can pull those right turners out and not stop them at a signal and get them in an emerged situation, then that allows more time for all the other fees is going on in those intersections and particularly the southbound, that southbound movement that was backing up in this scenario. So those are the long-term recommendations. I'm not sure that those recommendations are that long-term as necessarily needed at this point. I don't know. You wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So as Kate mentioned, you know, we've seen a lot of success with implementing the no turn on red. It does seem to have reduced some of the confusion and mitigated some of those really problematic right angle crashes. We're having a lot of really good compliance on that. I think when we had the left turn, we had the leftmost right turn on red, you know, that was always a prohibited movement. And I think we were seeing a 23, up to a 23% violation rate for westbound Viking of that movement. So since we've implemented the no turn on red, we've actually had some really good compliance. We've been watching the intersection and it's down to about a 3% compliance rate, which is really good. So the no turn on red really, as Kate mentioned, you know, it seems to have resolved those problematic turning movements and those right angle crashes were chweared the most severe. The other thing that we've been doing, as she mentioned, is we added additional detection. We have a really good, um, signal operations person that's been really studying the intersection, tweaking the timing on sixty-five and Viking to really make it so that that signal progression through the U-turn and onto sixty-five flows as smoothly as possible. Uh, we added some additional detection to detect people in the U-turn a lot sooner. So that way it's a more of a seamless transition and flow. And we'll keep monitoring the intersection to, you know, make sure that the signal timing is up to snuff. Um, and really keep tweaking that as we need to, to make sure that that intersection is operating really well. But from all, from all, um, from what our signal operations folks have been saying, it seems to be operating pretty well. But of course, open to, um, any comments that anyone has about the signal operations and what they've been thinking of the intersection thus far.
Okay. Um, I guess first question, we'll open up the council to this. First of all, thank you for doing the study. Thank you for the work. I know it was a lot of focus on us. So we heard tonight the recommendations from Stone Brook on the changes to be made. I guess the question then is, how is MINDOT gonna respond to that? And then, um, and then timing, I guess, too.
Right. So some of the short-term recommendations, like delivering the signal heads, clearing up the signage, some of those things can be implemented fairly quickly. You know, and something we can get to work on right away. You know, some of the long-term recommendations, I think that's something where we're just gonna keep an eye on the intersection. Make sure that we're understanding how things are operating. As you know, sometimes it can take a little while for a project to get through the, um, environmental and engineering process. So we're just gonna keep an eye on it, make sure that we're out ahead of it at the time where we might need to make some of those changes that are mentioned in the long-term recommendations.
Okay. Okay, questions from council?
Miley, I have a comment. Um, my experience is I go on that road almost at least every day between eleven and one and I, I must be there, the three percent that you see somebody turning right on red because every time I'm there, somebody does it. But it doesn't bother me. What bothers me is when I'm, I'm usually in the left right turn lane and it seems like it never fails that the person who's in the right right turn lane tries to come over into my lane and I have to slam on my brakes. And, um, and, and that worries me because I, I don't wanna be sideswiped. And so, and I don't know that there's a cure for that. I, I agree with you that people would try and in that acceleration lane, try and sneak over because people are in a hurry. It seems like they figure out ways to get around stuff. So.
And I think, uh, you were making some recommendations about, you know, signage recommendations and positioning so that people, um, are aware of the, the lane that they need to be in. Obviously, that's not going to completely resolve the jockeying for position, um, issue. But there, it, there may be, there may be some out there that just don't understand which lane they need to be in. And, you know, if that's the case, it could help. As far as the bypass lane, yes, that was definitely a concern that we had that, um, I think of, I think a few people had, um, even in our tack that, you know, if you have that, if you have that, uh, bypass turn lane, you know, you're gonna give people another opportunity to sort of cheat and get into the U-turn. But, um, you know, the, I think Stone Brook has done a great job of analyzing all of the crash data and really sitting, sitting out at the intersection and really understanding what's happening. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we, we hired them was, you know, to get a fresh set of eyes on it, take a look at it, analyze all of the data. There were a few things that were going on and we just wanted to make sure that we were understanding the issues and having a good, um, approach that came out of it and a good set of recommendations. And I definitely feel like we got those.
Yeah. Well, do you think a double white line would help there? You know, if it's the two lanes that are gonna make the U-turn?
Jennifer, can you put up the, the visuals showing the, the overhead of that sign?
Yep. Pull it up on the report. Might be easiest. And I don't have my mouse, so I apologize if it takes me a while over there.
Yep, that one right there. On the bottom.
Maybe not a double, but just a, a solid white line.
Well, kind of along the lines of Suzanne's talking about, one thing I realized at the intersection today is, and well, I also mentioned when you had the call is the, the signs that are being used, let's say right turn only are, I'll just call them traditional right turn only signs. So you're thinking you're turning on sixty-five, and I know that's a problem with some of the drivers. So, so my thought was instead of having this nice sweeping curve is you make it an angle because that's really what you're doing. You're not turning. You're going almost straight across. And so I think to show the driver, they need to go more straight. Then also on that right side sign, it, it's misleading because that sign's not correct because that lane you can go either into the J-turn or onto Highway sixty-five. So I, to me, I think that right-hand sign should almost have a split arrow or something that shows you can turn on the sixty-five. You know, I know signage is a problem here, but those two signs are the ones that are just controlling that turn. And, and I've seen other roundabouts and other, you know, the Michigan crossroad, I forget what you call. They got bigger green signs that actually show you which lane to go. I know there's not a whole lot of traffic in Viking, but I think the problem is when you get the intersection, you just got these two white and blacks, black signs that are telling you what to do. I know there's the overhead signs you went under, but
Yeah.
As soon as you go under, you forget those signs.
You forget it, yeah.
So.
I think the hope a little bit too is if we can clean up some of the signs and the other extra signs that are out there that you'll focus more and those guide signs will be more at your attention because you're not looking at so much else going on. It's kind of the hope for that. As far as putting up, you know, the different arrow signs, you know, we are bound by federal guidelines on what signs we can put on our roadways and which ones we can't. So I think MINDOT would have to really vet out something if it was gonna change from, well, I mean, there's federal standards and then MINDOT also has their, you know, their manual uniform traffic control devices is what it is. So I think MINDOT would have to probably vet that out to see if they would be even able to put in a non-standard sign.
It's, I think it comes down to it is, you know, when you're sitting at this intersection, okay, now what do I do? And none of those directional signs, you, you can't see them anymore because they're already behind you past them. I mean, if you're going into these new roundabouts, I mean, I think they're doing a pretty good job at signing it to tell you what lanes to be in. But you're moving, you're constantly, so you, you have someone's been sitting here for forty-five seconds a minute. Okay, now what am I doing again? You know, so.
Definitely something to be looked at. And I, and I, I agree with you on the roundabout signing and that's taken some evolution.
Yeah, I can imagine.
To get that, to get that kind of signing up. And that's kind of what I'm talking about here. I think those discussions would have to happen.
Yeah, because, you know, when I talk to people about this, I said, you know, if you just follow the signs, the problem is you already forgot what the signs said because you passed it for the last minute, so.
No, those are definitely good thoughts to consider and, I keep forgetting, I need to speak into this. Good thoughts to consider and, um, you know, that's definitely something that we can keep in mind as we move forward and some good short-term recommendations. I lost my train of thought. Um, but I can, oh, yes. What, with signage, it, it's definitely one of those considerations where, you know, too much of a good thing is not necessarily a good thing anymore. And that is, that's something that came out in the report as well. And what we were hearing too is there's just too much information at this intersection and, um, a lot of signs telling you what to do. And sometimes the message gets lost if you have too much signage.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's, there's no doubt. It's a very busy appearing intersection with all the signs opposed, everything, so.
The signs, I think, make it look harder than it truly is.
Right.
Has anybody considered putting, um, road, on the road signs, one would say Highway sixty-five and one would say whatever. You know, Highway sixty-five South, Highway sixty-five North, like they do on, well, I thirty-nine going south now where that whole ninety-four and
Right.
three ninety-four goes to go to Chicago. They actually have it imprinted on the roadway. So it would be further back on Viking to give you some time to juggle where you're supposed to be. My only thing is I don't know what they would call the J-turn because no one calls it that.
Yeah, that's, that's another, I, that's another thing where, you know, well, we can definitely run that idea past our pavement markings, folks. As Kate mentioned, you know, there's certain standards that sometimes we can get exceptions to them. For instance, the MUTCD pavement markings. So that'd definitely be something that we could take a look at and consider.
Other questions?
When you're talking about your long-term solutions, how far out, just a rough timeframe, and is it two years out, ten years out, twenty years out that they be implemented?
So long-term solution, um, I think for that, what we really wanna make sure that we're doing is evaluating the intersection to see, for right now, it's still operating pretty well. That's where, you know, it comes into play where we're just gonna need to keep an eye on it, very, keep a very close eye on it. And just make sure, you know, we're looking at the intersection, see how, how it's operating. As I mentioned before, it does take some time to, you know, develop a project, go through the process, go through the scoping. But, you know, making sure that we're keeping an eye on things and really identifying when we need to program a project. So I can't give a definitive timeframe, but that's something that we would like to do is just make sure that we're keeping an eye on everything.
All right. In the, during the design phase, I remember, I think there are pie charts basically showing the fraction of time per complete cycle about which direction gets what. And, and so I remember the, you know, the J-turns was, you know, how dramatically it changes that timing. With the new timing, it, I mean, and, and I do, I have noticed the timing getting better over the last month or two. And, and, uh, just the little things changing. So I can tell you're working on it. But have you done that same type of analysis and showed, you know, that, to show the, the drive, really to show those Viking drivers that they're not spending any more time than they were before. It's actually faster. Have, have you done those kind of?
Yeah, yep, yep. Um, and I think that kind of goes to Kate, your charts here. Let me see if I can get to it. Might be easier in the presentation. Right, there we go. So these charts kind of show that. So the blue is what it would have been for the signal. So we have twenty sixteen, obviously in twenty sixteen, it was just the signal. For the part, pie chart, are you talking about which movements you're taking? This is overall?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, I know this is already outdated, right, the data? Because you've made changes since then.
Oh, yes, we have.
So I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, you know, um, because the next point I'm gonna bring up is I'm gonna focus on this no right turn red because that, that's what affects the, at least I think in a driver's heads, they're going east while on westbound Viking. So I guess what I'm asking about is how much better is it now for those east and westbound drivers with the no turn on red?
Right.
Than it was before?
Right.
So, I mean, if that's something you can provide supplementally, that, that'd be nice to see, so.
Okay, yeah.
So, I, I, I mean, the, the biggest, I think the biggest impact on the drivers is that change to the no turn on red. And, you know, the idea, the whole idea was to, to, to get the drivers, east and westbound drivers, or at least the city's concerns, was we had some incredible delays at times. Is, is the, get rid of those delays, right? And, and, and so it, it sounds like MINDOT is gonna stay with no turn on red. And so my question then is, it comes back to kind of selling it to the public that th- they are still in a better situation, so. Um, and the only other thing I wanna talk about that no turn on red was that blank out sign. And I, 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 I think the way that, um, it was looked at in this analysis and the way that we were looking at it before is quite different. I mean, we recognize that in the, you know, peak traffic, the rush hour times, it makes a lot of sense not to allow any turns on red. Not that anyone can anyway because of traffic, but at least you eliminate those ones that wanna take that risk. And then at times like this time of day, when there's not a lot of traffic, instead of sitting at that light forever, you know, it would allow a turn on red during the non-peak hours. So it looks like the analysis was kind of just the opposite, saying that the blank out wouldn't improve any safety during the operational problem issues. Our focus wasn't the operational. Our focus is more of keeping traffic on Viking because that's, to us, it's more the East Bethel traffic, keeping that traffic flowing. So, so I don't know how that blank out sign works in that sense, but.
So I, I can address that a little bit. Um, when we did, looked at the crash analysis, there wasn't crashes necessarily happening at one time of the day. They were spread out throughout the whole entire day. So just running those blank out signs, we felt, you know, during that peak where, you know, is, that's when you think you would want to, you know, do that. Doesn't necessarily solve our crash issue out there because our crashes aren't necessarily just happening during that peak hour.
Okay.
So that was our concern with using that.
Okay, that's fair. Any other questions?
No, but I'm, I just wanna make a comment that once we get the, um, benefit analysis, I think we should put it in the bulletin and let the residents know that it is a benefit because there's still a lot of complaints out there. And I think if people can see, you know, maybe not charts, but in a paragraph form, you know, you are benefiting, you know, twenty seconds per car or something, you know, and it's been proven through extensive studies. So I, I think we need to get this information to the residents.
Okay, so the, it's kind of like the pie charts where it's showing, you know, the reduced delay from the previous signal.
And in writing because everybody can't read pie charts.
I, I think for the pie chart, it'd be nice to see what, if I remember right, you had one for existing and one for projected.
Right.
Right, for design. Now, now add a third one for actual, uh, what you're doing right now. And, and just to see how far, because the design was with allowing the, the turn on red. So, so I guess where I'm going with this is, is if, if the existing pie chart is similar to the, what was predicted using, allowing the right turn on red, then it's accomplished the same goal. So as frustrating as it is to sit at that light and watch no traffic go by and not be able to take a right, you know.
Right.
So.
Still moving you through the intersection faster.
So I think, I think that might be a helpful tool to present, so.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Questions from staff?
I will coordinate with Jennifer on getting an article ready for the next news letter.
Okay.
And we can address this and kind of put it in a very summary form. I'm sure that you can totally explain this in four paragraphs.
We could, you could present it at the open house.
We have to use a really good editing, so.
Absolutely.
I have one more question, only because you kind of touched on it. You talked about the Highway sixty-five project. You talked about the overlay, that whole overlay project?
Twenty twenty-four, yeah.
So you said that's been put off?
Um, no, it's just been re-scoped as a different type of project.
Okay.
They were gonna do a more extensive, I think, the reason why the, um, the signal heads were so high, those pedestals, were because they were gonna do more of a, I think.
So great elevation change, right?
Elevation change and reclamation project as opposed to, um, I think they down scoped it a little bit, so.
So that's not gonna happen now, that part of it?
That part of it, no. Um, but it does, as, as we're reevaluating the pavement section, um, you know, it can change, but for right now, it's, uh, um, then Millen overlay.
So construction's twenty twenty-four, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's from bunker up to?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's all the way up to
Sims Road, I believe.
Yeah, Sims Road. And there's actually two projects, all the way down to the Coon Creek Bridge and then down to eighty-first.
So is it just, is it just Batuminus or are you gonna do the concrete like we did out here? I'm asking too many questions.
Um, it's, I believe it's just Batuminus.
Okay.
But I might have to double check and get back to you on that.
Okay. Because we, that keep, that's one that keeps getting pushed off every year or two, so. Which I, it's probably any different than any other MINDOT project, right?
And, and that was, that, that was my assumption. It's Batuminus because it's going to end where our concrete section begins going north.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. Any other questions for these folks tonight?
No, just like I say, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having us and, yeah, giving us the chance to present. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you very much. Drive safe. Okay. Item B, you won.
Twenty twenty-two preliminary budget and levy. The city finance committee met with city staff on May sixth and June twenty-second to review and discuss the twenty twenty-two budget inputs and assumptions. The finance committee also discussed the city general fund balance, the actual city financial performance for the past two years, and the city's overall debt service requirements. After the initial finance committee meeting, the base budget was submitted to department heads for preparation of their individual department budgets. Finally, the proposed budget was presented to the city council at their July sixth work session and discussed again at their August second work meeting. The overall twenty twenty-two preliminary general fund expenditure budget is projected to increase by five percent or two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars. This expenditure increase would then result in a corresponding levy increase of one point five percent. or $91,700 in order to balance the twenty twenty-two budget. The twenty twenty-two preliminary EDA levy is proposed to increase by 12%, going from $121,200 in twenty twenty-one to $136,200 in twenty twenty-two. The twenty twenty-two preliminary HRA levy is projected to increase by 11%, going from $69,500 in twenty twenty-one to $77,000 in twenty twenty-two. At this time, staff is making four recommendations to city council. Recommendation number one is staff request council to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one, setting the final levy and budget date.
Okay, so first, we need a motion on resolution twenty twenty-one dash six one.
I'll make a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one, setting the date for final budget and tax levy hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none to that motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes.
With that, staff recommends council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two, setting the preliminary property tax levy and budget for twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash six-two, setting the preliminary property tax levy and budget for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm voting against all of these increases. I think, um, right now, we have record inflation in our country. People are hurting financially everywhere. I'm not convinced that we need to, all these increases throughout this budget. And we have a budget, we really need to stick to the budget and not go to increased levies every single time we want something. So, um, that's my reasoning, and that's all I have to say.
Mike, uh, we talked about, or Jack talked about, the increases, the general levy increases, one and a half percent. And then the increases on the EDA and the HRA levies. Do you have what the total aggregate increase is going to be between those three?
Yep, the total aggregate increase between those three is 1.9%.
So it's 1.9, okay. Because as someone who pays the taxes, that's what I care about, total is bottom line anyway, so it's 1.9, so.
And how does that fare with the other cities in Anoka County?
Yep, that data actually has not been released yet as far as what other cities are are planning to do for two thousand twenty-two, but I do kind of have a slide or, um, one of the things that we mentioned kind of in our work sessions is the last time we did an analysis of where the city ranked as far as tax rate in two thousand twenty-one, they ranked the eighth lowest taxes in Anoka County, and the tax rate itself is thirty-eight point three five eight. So again, out of the twenty-one cities in Anoka County, the city is ranked eighth lowest. And again, we've, we've really stood in the middle of that historically, but we've made strides now getting to even lower now. So we're the eighth lowest, so we're kind of in the territory of the Coon Rapids and the bigger cities that have that bigger tax base, so.
And with being the eighth lowest, the seven other cities that are lower, how many of them have city sewer and water infrastructure?
You have Oak Grove, which does not, Ham Lake, which does not, Lynnwood Township, which which does not, and Now Then, which does not. So four of those do not have infrastructure to pay for and take care of as we do. The other three are Blaine, Andover, uh, I'm not sure what the other one is, but those have huge commercial tax bases too, which spread that tax burden out over all the property owners in a more equitable fashion.
And I I'm sure, uh, different population than East Bethel.
Correct.
There's your list there.
And Anoka, that's the other one.
Anoka's good.
And and as you can see by that chart too, you know, there's, we're only 3% difference between Blaine and Over and 4% difference in Anoka, which have significantly more resources than we do to spread this out, so. East Bethel's tax rate in twenty fourteen was something like 59%. So that's been a significant reduction over the past seven years, while still keeping and maintaining and increasing and improving the level of services.
Are there any other changes to the budget that we can make to lower it without affecting anything? Great greatly greatly affecting anything, I should say.
That that would be a council decision, you know, I think we're, we've proposed a very realistic budget to keep our services at the same level. You can always cut things, but two, if you cut things, there's consequences to those reductions. Uh, and again, too, this is the preliminary budget, so whatever we approve in pass setting these resolutions, this budget can be cut and reduced before the final approval in December.
So as it stands, there's really no call it fat to trim from the budget, there's no excess spending anywhere?
Not not that we see. If you have any identifications or anything you see in there, we're more than welcome to take a look at those.
Okay.
I I think historically, when we've done budgets, when we have a concern or or an intent to, uh, lower that levy, is that, you know, there's there's particular items we focus on, um, to try to bring that down. So, I mean, Suzanne, I've known pretty much every budget meeting, you said the same thing about not wanting to increase the levy. But, you know, the 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 reasons why it's going up has been laid out pretty clearly by staff. And 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 I think without suggestions or recommendations on where do you start, uh, or what specific things we'd like to see reduced, it's it's pretty hard to make changes to saying it's it's too high, we need it lower, so it's.
If you'd have suggestions, we'd love to hear them.
I mean, and that's what we've asked in the past too, so, I mean, I I think we've, we've looked at all this and and and.
We just keep everything the same, so.
So, so if we want to keep the sheriff's contract the same amount, which we don't have a control over, that means we will have to cut sheriff services. Is that what you're suggesting?
No.
Are you suggesting you cut the fire department budget?
No.
So where do we start? Those mean, those are the two biggest things. I mean, you need, you've got, like, like Jack said, I mean, up until December, we can reduce this up until then. If you find something constructive, I mean, you've got the detailed budget book and Mike's at your, finance director's at your disposal too to go through things, so. So it, I I I guess what I'm saying, if we truly want to get anything more out of this, we need something, you know, a little more direct on what we want to reduce, so.
Well, my one was not increase the staff, but you guys voted that down already, so, and that was about 1.9.
Yeah, and we had that, we had a long discussion over that, so. Okay, on this motion, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Recommendation three, staff request council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three, setting the preliminary twenty twenty-two EDA levy and budget.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash six-three, setting the preliminary twenty twenty-two EDA levy and budget.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes.
And finally, recommendation four, staff request council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-four, setting the preliminary twenty twenty-two HRA levy and budget.
I'll make a motion for approval approval of resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-four, setting the primary housing and redevelopment authority property tax levy and budget for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. That completes our presentations. Onto consent agenda.
I will abstain from the consent agenda, because virtually all of it was before I sat on the council.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
I'd like to pull item F.
Okay, and I'd like to pull item C, it's a cat. Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. And, and, one upstays. Item C on page one seventy-nine of our packet. Where it talks about the personnel committee appointment. It states the motion was, that I made, was to approve council members Urkel and Harrington to the personnel committee. That motion should have just been Suzanne and not Tim. So with that, I'll make a motion to, with that change, make a motion to pass item C, the August twenty-third city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item F.
Um, well, I I kind of had a question about, this is about the firefighter resignation, and there was no reasoning in there, so I'm just wondering, is there a reasoning? And I also just wanted to thank him for his service, Jeremy.
It was voluntary on his part. There were some medical issues involved with that.
Well, I want to thank him for his service. I appreciate every single one of our firefighters.
Yeah, he had nineteen nineteen years in, I believe?
No, I think he had less than that.
Yeah.
I think twelve, I was thinking.
Yeah, it sounds like twelve, yeah.
Uh, I I read somewhere they joined in two thousand two.
He's got good play, good time and bad time, so it depends on what what he's got there, so.
Okay. Well, needless to say, it's been a long dedication.
Yeah.
Absolutely. With that, I will make a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. That completes our consent agenda. Uh, there is no new business. So on to department reports and community development. Stephanie. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, um, we are going to have a little bit of discussion about the zoning text amendment amendment review um, at the September seventh city council work session. Council directed staff to make some changes addressing, um, some of the amendments that are being proposed for the zoning text amendments, uh, one being detached accessory structures, uh, one for the parking of vehicles and recreational equipment. So with the detached accessory structures, um, there is just a, we just wanted to clarify some things with that. Um, one of them, we made a recommendation to have a minimum of twelve inch overhang on roofs, and council agreed with that, so we added that. And then also, we just played around with the verbiage, um, on C, which says it shall include two architectural features on sides directly adjacent and to, and visible from the public right away, and just give some examples of what they could do. The other one is the parking of vehicles and recreation equipment. So staff, we did take a look at the cities of Elk River, Otsego, and Andover, ones that are a little bit similar to us, where we have the more of an urban area and then also a lot of rural area. Um, Otsego and Andover does limit their parking of recreational vehicles, trailers, and equipment to two. And they all must be on an established driveway, um, side yard along the garage or in the rear yard. And then Elk River did not have any regulations pertaining to the number of allowed motor vehicles or recreational vehicles. So at this time, staff's not recommending changes to this section, just leaving it as is, until we can do a little bit more research and see what other communities are doing. So we just leave the verbiage as it is. But if you just look at the, your packet, uh, it does look a little bit different, just representing it different, um, putting it more in a bulleted list rather than just one big paragraph, because it was a little bit harder to understand. And then, the next one is the zoning map. So you have an attached draft of the changes on the zoning map, but I also have one up here on the screen for you to look at. Um, so I asked all the council members to draw on the map and give it to me on what you're thinking for the Coon Lake residential area. And I got a few of the maps. And this is what has been proposed now, it's coming forward for you to take a look at. And what we're focusing more on are the smaller lots around Coon Lake. There's a lot of large lots around Coon Lake, you know, one, two, three, four plus acres that the R one district or the Coon Lake district doesn't really pertain to. Because really, the only thing that we're changing with the Coon Lake area is the setbacks to the side yard and such, um, just because the yards are so much smaller. And then also, another thing that came forward with all of this is, um, so on the previous zoning map, I wish I had our current one up here. If down in this area of the city, right now, it is R one, the same zoning that's around the Coon Lake area. And according to our comprehensive plan, our twenty forty approved plan, this area also needs to go back to rural residential, rural residential, so we're showing this on the map as well. So at this time, um, staff's asking council to make a recommendation, um, review it and discuss it, provide me some direction on where to go with the zoning text amendments and the changes of the official zoning map. So our next steps would be, um, if you approve, or if you accept the changes tonight, there's going to be a public hearing at the planning commission scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-eighth. And those public hearing notices need to go in the paper no later than ten AM on Wednesday. And I think right now, we have about a thousand public hearing notices that have to be mailed out. Um, and then on October eleventh, it would come to city council, in which council will act on the changes and also approve the summary of publication. Then October fifteenth, the summary of the changes will be published, and the changes to the code and the official city map will become official. So it becomes official once it's published in the paper.
Okay, um, comments from council?
Okay, I, um, I'm confused by this map, because, and I I apologize for not submitting anything. It was, I had just had issues. Anyways, um, but it seems like there's no continuity with what's in the purple, it seems like. And I could be wrong, but it seems like there's a lot of lots that are small that could still fit in there. So, I don't know, it 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 just seems like all around the lake, there are some smaller lots that are not included in purple. It it just seems spotty. And my other thing is, I'm looking forward to the public hearing, because I want to hear what the people who live down there, what they think. Because this can change after the public hearing or not, or?
Uh, it would. If city council approves it. Uh, it would, if City Council approves it in October, then it becomes, it goes into effect, it's like October 15th, once it's published in the paper.
But the public hearing is at the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, yes, sorry about that.
And it comes back to council.
Then it comes back to council again.
We can change it there.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
That's what, because, because I'm really curious, but the residence thing, because I haven't talked to anybody. And I don't know if they're, if everybody wants to, if, if, you know, if I lived down there, I would feel like, I'm a Coon Lake resident. I should be part of the Coon Lake thing, district. And, but maybe some of them are, I'm glad they left me out, you know, so I don't know what it's gonna be like. But it, it just seems like it's splotchy, like it should, there should be more, I don't know, all around the lake is considered it, or not, maybe?
Well, it's pretty much all the shoreline minus a few big lots. Off of Viking and off of Thielen, but everything else that's shoreline is pretty much included.
Yeah, I'm not sure what lots you think are missing there Suzanne. It's pretty much like.
Well, even, I, I guess even the bigger lots could be included, or that little?
Well, is, is it the only real substantive change? Just the setback, side yard setback?
Seven feet in the side yard setback.
Um, yes, and then we, the, believe the front yard setback's a little bit less than the rear yard.
Yep.
Is, so it's really just these setbacks, and this is so these people in the, these smaller lots can do additions to their houses and have garages and, that's where we're coming in problems.
The, the, the Katie's Way, which is the 194th, I said, area, tho- those are all two-plus acres. They're all at least 200 feet wide. They don't have setback issues. The Coon Lake lots are 40 feet wide, you know, and, and some of them, and, and they need, it's tight.
And one of the reasons for this change is the recognition that these are special situation properties. It's very difficult, as Stephanie mentioned, to do an addition to even a deck. And we're constantly being bombarded with variances requests for these, so this just is the benefit of these property owners.
Oh, it's definitely gonna save the property owners' costs. I mean, there's no, you're not gonna have a fee to go through variance on this, or through public hearings.
No, I, I understand. I'm just thinking, there's, there should be some of these additional properties that are small lots, like over there off 191st and off of 185th Lane.
You're thinking the other side of Viking Boulevard should be included?
No, it's still south of Viking Boulevard.
191st? I'm not looking at the right place.
Where am I looking at? Oh, yeah, you're right. So, all right, 190, at the 185th Lane. Those areas along the lake, they don't look like they're huge properties, but maybe they are, and I'm not seeing it.
A lot of those have pretty substantial acreage, or I shouldn't say substantial.
Yeah, I mean, they're over an acre.
Look to be acreage.
Well, and that, that's, if you remember one of the work meetings, we talked about that. I mean, there, there's pockets of higher density housing in different parts of the city, you know? And I think initially, staff had wanted to include those, and it just got so muddled. You know, you can't call it Coon Lake, what do you do it? And then the folks, let's just stick around Coon Lake, so. So it's back to where do you, where do you draw the line? And, you know, the 191st, you know, neighborhood there, you know, they're, they're obviously not on Coon Lake. They're smaller lots.
But those people could still get a variance if,
Yep.
if they needed something, but just make this. I'm unfamiliar, these, off of Everglade here, what are these, are these lots buildable at all? Why are, should those be included?
The pie ones.
The pie ones?
Yeah.
The rear of those properties are not buildable.
Okay.
Most, all those do have houses on the frontage. There's a few that don't, but as you go back, get even 200 feet in the road, it's all wet.
Okay.
Couple of those are, I think are double lots.
Yeah.
Okay. I just had a question with that.
I actually have no problem with this. I'm just curious, you know, I'm not objecting to it at all. I don't want you guys to get the wrong idea.
Suzanne, something that, like, staff's been working on and that Mayor Voss brought up is when we had brought this forward in the beginning, I can't remember when it was, I think it was back in March, we did have pockets of these smaller developments, even this one on 109th Avenue that you're talking about, that's north of Viking Boulevard. We have these smaller pockets of these developments throughout the city that are half-acre lots and quarter-acre lots. And that's something that, on a staff level, we also want to bring forward in the future. But we need to do a little bit more research on it and maybe making those another zoning district, because they are such small.
Lotses all over the city.
Yeah, and they have so many issues on those lots as well.
Yeah. There's another little neighborhood off of 183rd that consists of Yancey, 181st, and Elmo.
I had that one marked.
There's a few of the Carlyle addition, there's, there's a lot of them that are smaller.
Yeah.
I think this is a good start. This is the, this is the park, right?
No, that's the campground.
The campground, that's, okay. So that's not subdividable right now.
It is.
Well, it is.
But in two acre lots.
Two acre lots.
Yeah. Um, any other discussion? Otherwise, I think staff would like a recommendation to send us the planning, correct?
That's correct.
Actually, I wanted to make a comment about the, the parking of vehicles, because I thought that council agreed that we were gonna change that to get rid of the restrictions.
The number of vehicles?
Yeah.
Well, that's, what Stephanie mentioned is that, that's basically gonna be a discussion for another time, because staff would like to do more research into it.
Because everybody else has less.
So it's not the last?
No.
Yeah, well, it's, we're still gonna take that up at some point here.
How I recall the discussion going was, we came up with this suggestion that evolved into this suggestion, that evolved into this suggestion, that evolved into this one, until it said, well, let's go back from the beginning.
Okay.
We need more research.
And as staff, when we were researching it too, there is nothing out there that is the same in any city with it either. So it's something that we really will need to sit down on a work session, and where, where City Council's comfortable.
I suspect we're gonna need probably a, somehow a phased approach, because obviously, we're not gonna allow 10 vehicles on a Coon Lake lot, you know? So, I mean, there's, gonna be, we're gonna have to figure that balance out, so. And we're not gonna get it done before next week, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion on a recommendation to planning?
Make the motion to accept the language for the detach, detach accessory structures, acknowledge that there will be no changing to the parking of vehicles at this time, and to approve the zoning map for the Coon Lake residential, and to send these items to Planning Commission for a public hearing and review.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made, second discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
Stephanie, one other thing that I just caught on page 212 of our packet. The CLR is still in there. I think you need to go through a few.
Yes.
And catch all the CLRs.
Yes.
Because somebody will go, what's a CLR, not a CL?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, on to city minister, I'm sorry, on to our city attorney. Order's changed, 2021-05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This continues the discussion we had from, I believe, the previous meeting where we were discussing the use of private kennels as an interim use permit, and discussing how the ordinance labels these as licenses rather than interim use permits. So in order to be consistent with the code and not go into unnecessary and applications with that, we've prepared the application that's in front of you now for the private kennel license application form, as it's indicated in Jack's report. There's a $150 fee associated with, with this that's in the, the schedule. The additions in, in here in red are to further comply with the code. It just asks how many acres are the, the property. This is because acreage dictates the number of dogs that can be held there. Is it a renewal or a new application? This is indicated because a, a new application for a private kennel license is good for one year. Subsequent applications can be renewed for up to three years. So an important distinction there. We ask that the dogs be identified that'll be on the property, so we can confirm the number complies with the ordinance, and ask for a description of, of the property itself in order to ensure that all setbacks are, are met. So this will take the place of what has been previously been done as an interim use permit application and is consistent with the code as written. In addition to that, you have an ordinance amendment in, in front of you right now related to the definitions of, of private kennel. This goes with what we discussed previously, the removal of the language relating to conducting a business operation involving the dogs. This was proposed by me in the memorandum from a meeting ago. The reason for this amendment is to keep consistency between the definition of commercial kennel and private kennel, and also because generally speaking, small-scale breeding was exempted for private kennels. And so that takes out that language that can result in some confusion, and potentially not exempt them. So those are the amendments in, in front of the council right now, and I would answer any questions on them.
On the private kennel license, you stated that there would be a $150 fee. Is that just a one-time fee and upon renewals? Where it states expires December 31st of each year. Upon renewal, is it, would there be an additional fee on every renewal, or is it just a one-time fee?
I believe, go ahead.
That would be a one-time fee. It's something that we'll also bring up for discussion. In December, when we set the 2022 fee schedule, what we're proposing now is those people that do have current kennel operations and were granted private kennel license, or private kennel license under an IUP format, they pay a $50 application fee. For those that have current IUPs that are active, which is two people, there will be no cost for the transfer to the license. Anybody that's applying for a new license for this, that hadn't been licensed beforehand, the license fee would be $150, which is currently what's in our fee schedule.
Okay, so it would be just a one-time fee and renewals every year would have no fee?
That's something we'll address at the December meeting when we discuss the fee schedule coming forward for the next year. We, we can either make it no renewal fee or have a renewal fee, but for this purpose now, in order to get everybody transitioned over, we're proposing a $50 fee if you have a private, had a private kennel license that's expired. And we will, under, under the IUP format. If you currently have an IUP that's current and was renewed, we'll just, we'll just transfer it over.
Okay. I thi- I think if, if, if we truly want residents to complete the private kennel license application, we need to seriously consider reducing significantly or eliminating this fee, because it's, you're not gonna get people to go lay down $150 so the city knows I have dogs. It's just not gonna happen, so.
And, and I agree, and there's, we know.
So I think when we did the fee schedule, we were talking about a whole different thing, about private kennel license. This is kind of a different thing now, comes down to it, so.
This is essentially, how many people have three dogs that, you know, they don't consider that a kennel? They just consider them pets, they keep them inside.
Yep.
Uh, there's probably several hundred. So, no, I, I agree, and that's something we can discuss, that, you know, this, this will be coming up, and we can adjust or eliminate that fee entirely.
I, to me, if we're gonna approve this, I think we need to change that fee now, so. That's just my feeling on it.
If, if we want to do that, we'll, we'll have an ordinance, it's a, an ordinance or a change in the fee schedule for the next council meeting to approve, and we'll make that a proposition to eliminate that.
What would this fee cover?
The, the, the fee just covers the initial review and inspection of the property that we had. But like Steve said, this is going in a whole different direction though. This, previously, private kennel licenses were issued to people that were doing limited breeding or had a number of dogs that they kept outside in a fenced-in enclosure.
Yeah, this is not a business, you know, they're not building anything, they're not making money off of this, they're just having pets. And while I, I, I agree having the structure in place for those who have, you know, numerous dogs, I, same time, I don't think we should charge for it either, so.
I could see like $10 just to review the paperwork.
We don't charge for dog licenses, right? And that's so we know where the dogs are.
Well, let me ask that on dog license. How many people in the city of Bethel actually license their dogs? How many dog licenses do we have?
Not, not a lot. Probably, I think we have maybe, I'm, I'm gonna guess that there's probably 150 dog licenses out there. We have almost 4,400 households, so if you say a quarter of them have dogs, that's 1,100 households times how many dogs, so.
Well, the only reason I ask is because mine always comes up, and it's like number 0002 or 0004. And I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking, hmm. So, so we don't get people to license their dogs as it is, what makes us think we're going to get people to apply for a private kennel license?
If we get a complaint that my neighbor's got six dogs and they're barking all the time, and complaint comes to the city, they have six dogs, like, well, then, you know, this has to be put in front of them. You're required to have his count license, so. It's not actively seeking it out. It's like we don't actively seek out dogs to get licensed either, you know? But.
It also articulates the number of dogs you can have on your property based on the, on the size.
Size of the property.
If you have a quarter acre lot, you can't, if you have 10 dogs, it's probably gonna be a.
Mess. What if we?
But, but this gives us at least some control, or, I wouldn't say control, but a handle on what's going on there, so.
What if we did this part of it, approved this, and you said there's only two people that currently have an active IUP that we're gonna switch to this, and everybody else is expired, or, or doesn't have one?
Well, what, what my proposal was in this, there's five people that have an expired IUP for a private kennel. And we're fairly certain that all of these are still active as far as doing the private kennel operation. Because these have expired and to get everybody on board with the program, that's why we just recommended a $50 fee just for the inspection of their property and the reapplication. For those two that are current, we just do the transfer from the IUP to the license. So we bring them into the program. Three that were issued IUPs no longer live on that property, so those IUPs are void.
I, I think for the few inspections that we're gonna have, it, it's, it's not worth putting, trying to recover $50, so. I mean, I, I think, again, if you truly want people to voluntarily do this, it can't be a cost. It's gotta be made easy, so. Just my view.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just thinking if there's a way to do it with just these seven people that are out there now, and then in December, because no one's gonna pay the 150 currently.
We can change the fee right now, and that's a check set. We could, we could.
Next, next meeting.
Do with us, so. We can do it. We can make that, that one fee change. We make fee changes.
All the time.
Not all the time, but occasionally we do. So, on the subject of the fee, where's everyone sit?
No fee.
I'm kind of on a nominal fee.
But, you know, for the
For the.
New ones, I think maybe a fee.
A nominal fee.
Or anybody that has a, I'd say, more.
Yeah, that's right. Ten bucks, it's nominal. It covers a little bit of staff. First inspection, a little bit of a staff time, because we don't charge for licenses, correct? But this is a little bit above just issuing a license and saying, here you go.
It takes time.
I think one of
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, I I was just gonna say, I think one of the the key aspects of of when Jack says there's an inspection and there's some some paperwork involved because it's really related to a structure, it's most likely ensuring setbacks are are met.
And and there are some standards that you have to meet in this application before you you can have the private kennel license. One of the big ones is setbacks for those people that have fenced-in areas, you know, with relation to private wells and septic systems. But that's that's why we figured fifty dollars is is probably a minimum charge for going out and just doing the basic inspection. But we don't anticipate any inspections after that unless there are complaints on the holder of that license. So, this wouldn't be an annual inspection. It'd be a one-time inspection for the granting of the license.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we keep these issues a little bit separate, focus on the private kennel license right now? So, Jack, your recommendations of?
Recommendation is to
Approval of changes.
Yeah, approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh five is the ordinance which Chris drafted and is presented in your packet.
Okay, is there a motion to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh five?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five. Second.
Certain motion made, second discussion.
Well, I have a question. We're changing an ordinance so that a business can be totally in compliance. Why can't we do that for other businesses and residents? If it's not proposing any kind of a hazard or anything in the, you know?
I'm confused.
It seems like it's it's not a hundred percent fair that we change get rid of an ordinance to make it a amended ordinance for one person, but we don't ever do it for other people.
You're gonna have to explain yourself. You mentioned business and this is private kennel license.
Well, I understand that, but it it's a resident and other residents have come forward. We've had violations.
But this is not for a resident.
This is for everyone.
This is for seven people who now currently have I U Ps that we've discussed. I U Ps are no not required for this.
Well, I understand and I'm talking about in general, other I I feel I'm not understanding why you guys aren't understanding me. Other people have had issues and we could have just changed the ordinance for them. But instead, they had to jump through hoops and spend money to fix issues on their property or move their business or something.
I'm sorry, I'm new. Give me an example, like.
Well, I've been here a while and I don't follow, but it's I mean, to your statement about not changing ordinances, we we change ordinances all the time based on situations. This this change has nothing to do, I I know you're referring to gratitude farms. I wish you'd just say it.
No, no, not necessarily.
But that's how this all started. But this isn't a change to get anyone in in compliance. This is a change because our ordinance was not structurally sound. Is that maybe the best way to put it, Chris?
I I I think it was confusing. And I also think that, you know, it it clearly exempts by its language certain types of dog breeding, because it only counts dogs over four months old. But then it goes on to contradict that in the in the same sentence. So, it it just didn't make much sense and it doesn't read consistently with a commercial kennel definition. Where a commercial kennel clearly states it's for dogs that are not on the property housed by the general public. And a private kennel is is for dogs that are owned on the property. So, it it makes those a little bit more consistent as well.
I have no problem with the wording of this or anything. I'm just the ordinance amendment itself is is was my question. But I'm I I'm just going to skip it because you're not understanding and I'm not making myself clear.
Are are you talking as a general discussion base? Why do we only change some ordinances and not others?
Well, exactly, when we could have changed ordinances for some people so they could have shipping containers in their yard or I'm.
Well, and coun- and council is very clear. Council did not want to make that change.
But and I I understand that, but that's an example that just came to my head right now. It's not the only one that just came before us. But it's it's fine. I don't have a problem with this at all. It's I'm just trying to say it seems like the city is unfair to some people and others they show a preference for. But it it's fine.
Well, I think.
It doesn't have to do with this particular one.
Staff will probably disagree with what you just said. I think council pretty much disagrees with what you just said, but okay. You've you've made that statement in the past. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, non-opposed, that passes. To the matter of the fee, do we want to address that now? I have staff draft new ordinance adjusting the fee for this.
Were we charging before for private kennel I U Ps?
A hundred and fifty dollars.
So, if we drop it to anything below a hundred and fifty dollars, people are gonna be going in the right way.
Well, I will render my opinion. If you dropped anything other than zero, we're not gonna get anyone to apply. Maybe five dollars. At that point, why collect five dollars?
If if it were anything less than fifty, I would recommend no fee because it's not worth it. It's costs more to collect it and process it.
More cost if you have to cash in the check, so.
So, a hundred and fifty dollars, we have seven of them out there. Only two of them are valid. So, it's basically three hundred dollars out of.
Well, if anyone if anyone going forward in the future wants to apply for this, I mean, may maybe there's ten next year. Who knows, but.
But it's not enough money to make it worth.
One of the other things, the value of getting this, hopefully, a zero fee would incentivize some people to do it is we get better records and encourage and have proof that more dogs have their rabies vaccinations. That's why there's no charge for the dog tags.
Well, how how about this solution? Drop it to zero right now and end of twenty twenty-two, we will bring this back up, review it, review how many applications have came in. If, you know, four hundred applications come in, we may have to change it because that's probably eating up a lot of staff time and but if we only get three, well, obviously, it's not gonna be worth it. But just to change it to zero right now and review it before the end of twenty twenty-two.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, we can get a motion to direct staff?
Make a motion to drop the private private kennel license fee to zero with the review and analysis of said licensees before the end of twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second discussion. And so so Jack could bring back a?
We we do that by resolution.
For next meeting? Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto street name change.
City Council approves Sand Hill Parkway is a name for the new service frontage road connection from one hundred and eighty-seventh Avenue to Viking Boulevard. Extensions of this route will eventually connect one hundred and eighty-first to two hundred and twenty-first Avenue. There is an existing dedicated road easement within this alignment that begins just east of Sandy Drive in the intersection of two hundred and twenty-first Avenue. This easement is platted, but the street has not been constructed. This easement has been assigned the name of Aberdeen Street and is situated between two hundred and twenty-first Avenue and the two hundred and nineteenth Avenue grid designation. Before any other development occurs in the area accessed by way of this easement and with the intention of having this alignment be named Sand Hill Parkway for its entire length, it would be advisable to consider changing the name of this segment at this time. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-five, the name change of Aberdeen Street between two hundred and twenty-first and two hundred and nineteenth Avenue to Sand Hill Parkway.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-five, the name change of Aberdeen Street between two hundred and twenty-first and two hundred and nineteenth Avenue to Sand Hill Parkway.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto staff report.
Uh, I just have one thing and anyone in the city that does have Midco TV, which is their streaming service, the public access channel on that is channel seventy-seven instead of channel ten. So, uh, if you wanna watch the council meetings live with the streaming service from Midco, you can find that on channel seventy-seven.
Are we running that on?
We're we just got this notice today. We'll put that on the website.
Oh, when it when does it change?
I don't know. We just got I got the notice today.
That's changed already?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
So, people looking for channel ten are gonna find what?
Oh, this is only if you have the Midco streaming service.
All the streaming, okay, okay. Didn't realize I had that.
Yep.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, council reports. Brian?
There is no meetings to report on. Uh, we do have upcoming E D A meeting on the twentieth where we will be interviewing consultants for the broadband project. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Wanda?
Only thing I have is we had a golf tournament on Friday, pretty successful golf tournament. I hope everybody who came had fun. And that's all I had was chamber golf tournament.
Okay, Suzanne?
I have a airport pre-meeting this week on Thursday, I believe. And if anybody has any input that they want discussed, they can email me or call me. What else do I have? I think that's it. But I do wanna bring up that there was a public nuisance article in the bulletin. And I think that it was it's not a good thing for the city to be putting out. I don't think the city should be asking neighbors to report on neighbors. I don't know who came up with this. I think it should have came before the council, before it got put out. And I think maybe it would be better, a better approach would be just to encourage people to talk to their neighbors. And that's all I have.
Okay, Ja- Jack, that that's the article that's been published a few times, right?
That article has been published at least four times over the year.
So, once a year we do that?
Well, usually once every other year.
Okay.
So, over the last eight years, it's probably been published four times, same article.
And I don't recall the article, but did the article actually say, report on your neighbors? Uh, I think Suzanne, I mean, that's what you said.
That's the insinuation that people were getting out of it.
Well, I think that that's partially true because it comes from the aspect of the city's reactive to complaints, not proactive. So, the city doesn't go out and seek this. See, see.
It sounded like the city was seeking people to report on to to turn in their neighbors, is what it.
Okay, I mean, I'll have to reread the article, but I don't remember that insinuation at all.
I I didn't I didn't get that from it, but.
So.
That's what a lot of the residents.
Well, I understand it. Did you explain to them how it works?
No, I wasn't going to get involved. I'm sorry. I I saw that you.
They complained to you about something and you don't have a response to them?
No, it was on Facebook. You responded and that was.
Yeah, so you so you saw my response, but you made it sound like you got complaints. So, you there was this Facebook post.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, ju- I suppose just to be clear, it's not to rat out your neighbors on anything. It's if there are issues, you can come to the city and there can be resolved. It's it's not, uh, it's not writing out your neighbors or anything like that.
Right.
It basically just lists some of the ordinances and some of the things that the city.
Right, and I I think my comment, my main comment was to encourage residents to talk to their neighbors rather than come to the city, whereas that is saying come to the city.
There there's that that that'd be great. There's also the saying fences make for good neighbors. And with some neighbors, they may have talked to each other and it's just gotten to a point where they can't resolve it themselves.
You know, Suzanne, I the article's on the screen and and I don't see anywhere in that article or or even close to it saying way to rat on your neighbors.
In the headline, I don't I don't think the it should have a better headline because it's not necessarily a program.
Are you reading the city staff conducts inspections based on citizen complaints? Do you think that means ratting?
I mean, that's our policy. Okay, so, okay.
I have no more comments.
So, it's not there, but you're 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 insinuating from the comments you saw on social media.
I'm sorry, the residents are think that it's insinuating.
Okay. And that's what I tried to correct on that post, so. Is there anything else you have?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Tim?
Uh, we've had two sunrise watershed meetings, Thursday, September second and September tenth. September second was a board meeting. We reviewed the community ordinance for compliance with the S R W O minimums. Uh, we're in the process of finalizing the J P A amendment amendment and that'll be coming to the city, I hope, sometime October, November, so we can look at it and vote on it. And we got some information on some grants, some extra grants for twenty nineteen. And then on Thursday, the tenth, we went on a tour. We toured four different projects at the Sunrise Watershed. Has completed two on Martin and two on Coon and all of them look very nice. It was money well worth money well worth spending, so. And my last thing is, um, I'm very disappointed with one of our city contractors on our behavior and social media as of late. And I'd like to make a a motion to pull the contract of gratitude farms.
I'll second that motion, discussion. I don't know. I think, Brian, you said you saw a post, same post I saw from from Tammy Gimple. It's it's from her personal page. And what it was was she had shared a page from another Facebook page. And that page had just a few posts on it. But they they all were clearly ridiculing the situation about. But they, they all were clearly ridiculing, um, the situation about, um, all the way back to Duke the Dog. I mean, there's one post that, um, ridiculed Christine Dahlman. I mean, it wasn't direct, but it was, that was the impression I got when I saw it. There is one post that, uh, and these were like animated cartoons, so it's hard to describe without seeing it. Another one ridiculed council member Urkel. And then one that bothered me the most was that, uh, it, it made fun of the whole fact that the owner of Duke no longer has Duke the Dog. And, um, it, it, you know, the, the, the page itself, uh, we, you know, who knows who created it? But, um, you know, Tammy Gimple had, I don't write terminology, shared it or whatever, but it came onto my Facebook page. I saw her comments and, and her comments was, you know, they were not the most pleasant either. I don't have it in front of me, but, it, it was, it was very disappointing. And, and, and to have our city contractor not only ridicule a council member, but, you know, a member of our, one of our residents that happened to be the one that was unfortunate enough to lose a dog and then, you know, in the end surrendered that dog and just make fun of it. And the fact that she associated herself with that page, that, that's not right. It doesn't send a good message at all, so. Anyone else, you see the page, Brian?
I did see the page.
So.
I agree with Steve. I mean, a city contractor should live up to higher standard. You know, shouldn't be saying things and doing things like that. You know, it's, it just doesn't sit well with me.
I, I totally agree, but I have a question, because when I sat over there and she had on her Facebook page where it was calling me Urk the Jerk and making all those kind of comments, and I brought that up, you guys just thought I was harassing her. And I wasn't.
You're referring to the same page?
Well, it was on her, on her, um, gratitude farm page. At the bottom, she had a, a link to this pa- page with the same
Did you present that to us or just talk about it?
Yes, I, I showed you guys, I, I told you guys to bring it up. I told you guys where it was. I, I said, "Why is this allowed?" And, uh, I, I really didn't get much of a response. And I think you guys just thought I was harassing her, and I, I was just offended, but
Well, I think the difference is Suzanne.
But it's okay.
I mean, I'm just saying, I think the difference is, we're presented with something, not hearsay.
Well, it wasn't hearsay, because it was on her page.
No, but you're, what you're presenting was hearsay to us, because you didn't present us with those documents. Okay, I'm just saying that's
I don't have the documents here, but I've seen, I, I saw the page.
You saw that too, so, okay.
It showed up, and somebody actually messengered it, because that clown picture is the same picture that she used with the Urk the Jerk.
Yeah, but there's, there's a message that goes with it and, and which I'm guessing is someone's voice is digitized or something, so, but, it's, it's not what we need out of a contractor, so.
So, with this motion, you want to pull the contract with gratitude farms for our ACO?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to amend the motion just to clarify it. Based on our contract, we require to give a thirty-day notice, so. I'm gonna state that council staff provide gratitude farms with thirty-day notice of cancellation of the contract. And for staff to, uh, work with North Metro Animal Control to work out a contract with them.
When is her contract up?
It's, it's my, it's my motion to amend.
I'll second.
Second, man, discussion.
When is her contract up?
Her contract was renewed last year, so it's got about a year and a half to go.
All right. And is there any other option besides, North Metro is the one in Oak Grove? Or Andover?
Andover, yeah. We just bid, yeah, we just bid us out a few months ago, and those are the only two that came out, so. And this would be a one-year contract, so, basically. Any other discussion? And, and just, just so we're clear too, um, in terms of social media and gratitude farms, staffs had discussions with Tammy in the past about it. I had discussions in the past about being a contractor and being on social media and what, what all could happen, so this, this isn't anything new, so. And as Suzanne said, it's not new, so. But for me, this is the last straw, so. Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. You have anything else to report, Tim?
No, that's it.
Okay. Uh, I do not, other than it was an enjoyable time at the, at the Chamber of Commerce golf tournament. It was a beautiful day. It's, it's good to be around, uh, be around the business community from time to time, so. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes or means adjourn. Thank you, everyone.